The Lemmonster City Council meeting is funded in part by De Careless Insurance Agency at www.decarelessinsuranceagency.com and by Avidia Bank at www.avidia.com.
I have an interview scheduled with Mr. Chambers. He was, due to the weather situation tonight, he was given the option, and I would ask that we just continue this interview out. I don't know what the schedule looks like for the next, the next hearing, the next date.
We can have some availability the next time before we have our public hearings for the poll petitions that we have on for the first time tonight. So if we did it at like 6:40, that would be five minutes before, before our first public hearing.
Perfect.
And Mr. Chambers said he would be available that day on the 23rd.
Excellent.
Oh, not 23rd. I'm on today's, the 23rd, the 13th.
That would be my recommendation, Mr. President, so we do it on February 13th at 6:40 p.m.
Okay, and the clerk will confirm that with him. All right. And then, um, we'll have a public forum in a minute.
Yes.
Let me grab it, yeah, if you can. Thank you very much.
The audience to speak on any matter specifically listed on the council agenda. Speakers will be asked to come to the microphone and state their formal name and address, along with identifying the specific item or items they wish to address. Each speaker is respectfully asked to keep their comments within a two-minute timeframe. The council will not be responding or answering any questions. However, at the discretion of the council president, clarification may be given. Nobody has signed up this evening, so I will ask, would anybody like to speak at the public forum? If so, please step to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Once again, would anybody like to speak at the public forum? And for the third and final time, would anybody like to speak at the public forum? Seeing none, I declare the public forum closed. Time is now seven o'clock, so at this point, I'm going to ask that we open the regular meeting of the Lemmonster City Council for January 23rd, 2023, and I'll ask that all of you please stand and join me for a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, united, indivisible, limited, and justice for all.
Now going to take a roll call of the honorable members of the Lemmonster City Council, beginning with Councilor Bedanza.
Present.
Councilor Cormier.
Present.
Councilor Ardinger.
Present.
Councilor Angelini.
Present.
Councilor Brady.
Present.
Councilor Shalfo Zephyr.
Present.
Councilor Deacon.
Present.
Councilor Frida.
And I am present. All nine members are present this evening. Does the Madam President have any records to approve this evening?
Thank you, Mr. President, but that's Ms. Vice President.
Vice President, sorry.
I did. I have reviewed the minutes of the January 9th, 2023 meeting. I find them to be in good order, and unless anyone has anything that I missed on there, I would ask that they be placed on file.
Okay, so you've heard the Vice President's recommendation to place the January 9th, 2023, minutes on file. Is there any questions or comments? Seeing none, those minutes will be placed on file, and I'll ask that we entertain a motion for recess. Councilor Bedanza, seconded by Councilor Ardinger. All those in favor of going to recess signify in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of nine to zero. We now stand in recess, and with the Chair of Ways and Means, conduct her interview on the brave soul that weathered the storm tonight and came out for his interview. Thank you very much. We appreciate that.
Good, good evening, Mr. Chambers. My name is Pauline Cormier. I am the Vice President and the Chair of the Ways and Means Committee. The other members of my committee are Councilor Frank Ardinger, to my left, who is the clerk, and the third member is Councilor Susan Shalfo-Zephyr, sitting directly across from me. I just want to say welcome.
Thank you.
And this is a, in the interview, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests the appointment of James Chambers, 63 Jamestown Road, Lemmonster Mass., to the Conservation Commission, term to expire April 15th, 2026. Mr. Chambers, welcome again.
Thank you.
This is your opportunity, and I think we all have a copy of your resume, just your opportunity to introduce yourself a little bit and, and give us an idea of what brought you to, to the Conservation Commission.
Well, my wife, Janet, and I are newcomers of 35 years, according to some of you, but we've done our best to establish our roots within the city and have been a part of the community, and we really make an effort to be part of it. This is just my next step towards that. I'm retired from the Army as a civilian. I was the environmental engineering manager for the DPW. I was a deputy DPW, so I'm familiar with DPW issues. As an environmental compliance officer, I was responsible for dealing with the state and the EPA, DEP, and federal EPA. I managed, I was responsible for the super fund cleanup that allowed Fort Devens to transfer from military use to civilian use. And my involvement with that was to identify areas of potential concern, do site investigations, determine a course of action, what the remedial action should be, if necessary, and then go about it. And then, as a result, whatever we did with the property, we had to evaluate it and do a finding of suitability to lease or finding of suitability to transfer. That was, that enabled the land bank, now Mass Development, to receive the property in their turn, sell it to commercial interests and stuff. So we were providing them with all the environmental background of the various sites. The, the Fort Devens was divided up into parcels, so it could be transferred parcel by parcel. And so I was involved with that from 1991 through 2001. And then, um, I went on to, got offered a position with a private consulting firm out of South Borough. And my experience with environmental, I also have experience in operations engineering, operations management. So I was hired as the Vice President of Operations for this civil and environmental engineering company. The business was at a state of flux. It was 10 years in business. It was either to grow, sell, or just shut down. And as the operation manager, I came in, got the finances straightened out, and they were able to sell the company to a national company that wanted a local site. And being an operations guy, they didn't need me now because they were coming in with all their operations people. So I went on to open my own business. I got into fire, water, and mold damage remediation. And I did that for about eight years. And learned a lot. I know a lot about mold cleanup, the air quality, things like that. Familiar with asbestos issues, lead issues. I went back to Fort Devens, 2010, became the Environmental Manager for, for the DPW itself, not just to transfer property, but manage ongoing operations of the DPW, and reviewing the, all the aspects of projects that were proposed, looking at the environmental conditions that needed to be set forth on those. In essence, because it's not a elected government, the Army governs themselves, so I was, in effect, the Conservation Commission also. I read project that was going to be done, whatever, had to pass my desk, and I had to do what's called a record of environmental consideration, and evaluate the property for, and the actions to be taken on it, and what potential impacts they might have on it. And there's a bunch of waivers and things like that because of military use and such. But otherwise, you know, it's pretty much staying in compliance with the state and federal laws. Got quite involved with the Mass DEP on a, a water project. We wanted to bring water down to a training area on the south post. And, and because of, it took us a long time. We ended up hauling a lot of 10,000 gallon tanks in there to support the troops. But what they wanted, even though it's 5,000 acres south of Route 2, they wanted a water plan as if we were developing 5,000 acres, subdividing it and all that. So I do a hydraulic study where, where the water was coming from, where the water was falling to, was it being affected by, we, and Fort Devens, the south post is a training area. The middle of the south post is highly contaminated with unexploited ordinance and stuff. Please stay out of there. If you happen to be a hunter, don't, don't hunt in the middle of the firing range. But hunting, that was another responsibility I had. The, one of my staff was a forester and a biologist, and he took care of those issues on the south post. And when we were in the main post, we had a lot more land that was wildlife, and of course, the Federal Wildlife Service took over a good portion, about 800 to 1,000 acres of the land when we transferred it in 96. So now the Army still maintains, there's about 5,000 acres or so south of Route 2, and about 500, 600 acres that they have still within what was the old Contomin area, known as the Contomin area, on the north side of Route 2, in and amongst all the business development that's going on there. So I interact with the Devens Enterprise Commission as well, because as a result of our dividing the property up and everything, all of their sewage systems are running through our property, so we had to, you know, account for that. And we were, some of our ponds, I guess, flow to waters, nautical waters of the United States, and were, it imposes this Clean Water Act on us. And there's all sorts of regulations. I'm sure your Conservation Commission deals with some of that as well, regards to like the setback boundaries from wetlands, such as that. So, um, that's it. As a community member, I've, I was on the building committee for Holy Family Church. I interacted with the, all the contractors to get that building constructed. A softball coach, nothing like trying to herd a bunch of nine-year-old girls around. And, um, well, I've just really been involved, and my wife has been involved. We're, we're retiring now, but we want to remain part of the community and active in the community. So I'm here to offer my years of experience in environmental engineering. It's not quite the same as people on the other side fighting for conservation, but I understand that. And that was often the negotiations that took place, was meeting the goals of conservationists, with the goals of developers, with the impact on the budget and such too. So I'm not, I would not impose anything that would cause severe impact on your budget without consulting with you thoroughly on such a thing. But, you know, I do have to get familiar with the procedures of municipal government, other than, you know, I dealt with, as being the representative for the Army, I went out to, you may know that Lancaster, Harvard, and Shirley, their land, and air, all their lands comprise Fort Devens. So a lot of the environmental issues have, have to deal with the various towns as well. And in the Shaba, they have the Shaba Valley Public Health Officer here. Here you've got your own, so.
Excellent. Thank you. I'm going to open this up to the other members of the committee, and I will turn first to Councilor Ardinger.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I have to tell you, sitting here listening to you, you and looking at your resume, I am just so impressed. You know, you have such a background that I think we'd be honored, we'd be lucky to have you on our Conservation Committee, especially, you know, you're, you know, dealing with Fort Devens. I mean, having to deal with EPA and DEP and all the, it's no wonder you have white hair. It's just no wonder that you have white hair. But have you had a chance to attend any Conservation Committee meetings?
Yeah, I went to one in December, you know, because I had seen, how I became aware of this, the ubiquitous Facebook. I never used Facebook myself until the epidemic hit. So, I'm just becoming, I'm just a newbie to it. But I saw Mr. Crump had posted something about an opening for the Conservation Committee, and that's how I got interested. I didn't know, I would always be interested. In fact, we, my wife and I own a small piece of property up in New Hampshire, and we have, well, up there, they don't call the zoning board of the field, the zoning board of adjusters and stuff. And one of our neighbors bought six acres that are contiguous to us that have, for the longest time, been conservationally. And now he's proposed to divide it up into three parcels. So, you know, we were very interested in that.
Okay. That's, it's great. You know, if you, I'm just sitting here, and I had some notes about your different businesses, but you've answered them all. So, I would say thank you very much, and I'd be more than happy to have you on our Conservation Commission.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Schalfo-Zephyr?
Thank you very much. Thanks very much, Jim, for coming down tonight on such a miserable.
Well, that's why I was a little late, because I checked this afternoon, and they said, well, we're not sure. And Janet works downtown, so she came home and said the roads are okay. So, she drove me back.
Good. No, good. No, we really appreciate it. We appreciate you coming down because it's nice for us to all get to know you, I mean, obviously. And then it's nice for the public as well who are watching, you know, the program, to know who sits on boards and commissions. So, I, to fully disclose, I worked with Jim for a number of years in my former capacity at Ginny's Helping Hand, and worked very well together and really appreciated all of the hard work that Jim did for us as a volunteer at Ginny's, and very key member of our team. So, I've known you for a long time. I did not know about your environmental engineering background and all of the work that you did at Devens, which is, you know, very specifically relevant to the Conservation Commission. So, that's wonderful to hear and to echo, I think, what Councilor Ardinger said. I mean, you know, we'd be very, very happy to have someone with your qualifications and experience and background and training, you know, on the Conservation Commission. Conservation Commission, DEP and EPA can be tough, but I think we've all had our individual cases or whatnot, you know, before the, and I don't mean like us individually, but just we've been involved in some. And they can be very, very tough because, you know, people want to develop property they own. The Conservation Commission is tasked by law with protecting water supplies, water supply protection districts, you know, and all of the zoning, you know, ordinances. So, it's a tough job, you know, in a lot of ways. So, I just want to say thank you for coming down tonight. Thank you for volunteering to be on the Conservation Commission, and I certainly am happy to support your nomination tonight.
Thank you, Susan.
All set. Are there any other members of the council?
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Councilor Angelini?
Good evening, Mr. Chambers. Thank you so much for offering services to the community. Make sure my mic is on. So, I was also very impressed with your resume, and hopefully you'll never have to put any of the super fun site skills that you require. And, and, you know, obviously, you work with the upper brass of the military, very compelling. But I think I'm most impressed with last year league coaching. Definitely says quite a bit about an individual. One last thing, and then I'm going to pass on to the other members of the council. So, in your dealings at Devens, you've, have you been involved at all with Phase 1 and 2 federal stormwater regulations?
Yes.
Okay. Terrific. That's great. No further questions. Thank you, madam.
Thank you. Any other members of the council? Seeing none. Mr. Chambers, thank you again for coming down. That's going to conclude our interview today, and I believe that we're going to have no problem recommending you for the Conservation Commission. And thank you so much for coming down and being willing to do this. And perhaps we can ask the city council president, once we get back into session, is to bump up this appointment a little bit, so you won't have to stay out in this weather too late. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we now stand back in session, and we will move right into items which is under communications from the mayor, beginning with money orders. C-40, Madam Clerk.
C-40, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request an appropriation of $51,536 be made to the police department replacement equipment account, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund.
And C-40 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. First time on the calendar. Regular course, please.
C-40 has been given regular course. Moving on to C-41.
C-41, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request that the council authorize the appropriate departments to research, develop, and participate in a contract or contracts to aggregate the electricity load of the residents and businesses in the city, and for other related services independently or in joint action with other municipalities, and authorize the mayor to execute all documents necessary to accomplish, excuse me, the same.
And C-41 is referred to the Chairman of Legal Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. First time on the calendar. Regular course, please.
And C-41 has been given regular course. Moving on to petitions, first time on the agenda, 17-23.
17-23, Massachusetts Electric, sorry, Company, DBA, National Grid and Verizon, New England, Inc., request permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. Chalmers Street, National Grid, to install one jail pole on Chalmers Street and relocate one jail pole on Chalmers Street, beginning at a point approximately 35 feet west of the center line of the intersection of Hoover Street, and continuing approximately 10 feet in the north direction. Install pole number 15-02 to reconfigure services to house and reduce sag in overhead lines. Location approximately is shown on plan attached. Wherefore appraise that after due notice and hearing as provided by law, it be granted a location for and permission to erect and maintain poles and wires, together with sustaining and protecting fixtures, as it may find necessary. Set poles to be erected substantially in accordance with the plan filed here with Mark, Chalmers Street, Lomester, Massachusetts.
And 17-23 is referred to the Chairwoman of Public Service.
Excuse me. Regular course, please.
And 17-23 has been given regular course. I believe you need to establish a public hearing for February 13th.
Right. And we will establish a public hearing for February 13th, 2023, at 6:45 p.m.
Okay. All those in favor of giving this regular course and establishing the public hearing for February 13th, 2023, at 6:45 p.m., signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero. And Madam Clerk, let the record reflect that I will not be voting on this petition. It is partially owned by my employer. And 18-23?
18-23, Massachusetts Electric Company, DBA, National Grid and Verizon, New England, Inc., request permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. Elm Street, National Grid, to install one jail pole on Elm Street, beginning at a point approximately 275 feet west of the center line of the intersection of Hill Street, and continuing approximately 30 feet in the south direction. Install pole number 54-5 for new underground service. Location approximately is shown on plan attached. Wherefore appraise that after due notice and hearing as provided by law, it be granted a location for and permission to erect and maintain poles and wires, together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures, as it may find necessary. Set poles to be erected substantially in accordance with the plan filed here with Mark, Elm Street, Lomester, Massachusetts.
And 18-23 is also referred to the Chairman of Public, Chairwoman of Public Service.
Thank you very much. This is going to be given regular course. I would also like to refer this to the DPW, and I'd like to go back to 17-23 as well and refer that to the DPW. Please. And then we do need to establish a public hearing for February 13th, 2023, at 6:50 p.m.
Okay. So, 18-23 has been given regular course with a referral to the DPW. And all those in favor of giving this regular course and establishing the public hearing for February 13th, 2023, at 6:50 p.m., signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero. And once again, Madam Clerk, this piece of equipment is partially owned by my employer, and I will be abstaining. Moving on to matters before the city council, Mr. Chairman of Finance, do you have a financial report?
I don't have a updated financial report, but I did update the one from the prior meeting. The only difference is a, one more proposed distribution from the stabilization account. So, the numbers are, the beginning balance at the start of the fiscal year on July 1st, Interest has been included since then of $61,550, for a total of $20,736,916. With the new proposed petition on the calendar this evening, or on the agenda this evening, of $51,536. The total proposed from the stabilization account, either approved or proposed, is $3,882,823, leaving a balance of $16,854,93. That is the financial report.
Okay. Is there any comments or questions in the financial report? Seeing none, we will move on. And before we get into items under finance, I'm going to ask that we move to page 6 at the very top, which is under Ways and Means, and it is the appointment of James Chambers. And I'll ask the Chairwoman of Ways and Means if she would like to take up this appointment at this time.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request the appointment of James Chambers, 63 Jamestown Road, Lomester, Mass, to the Conservation Commission, term to expire April 15th, 2026. As you all heard, we had a nice interview with Mr. Chambers this evening. He is a five-star recommendation, and I will, it is my recommendation to the council that we appoint him immediately. And I'd ask you to check with the members of my committee.
Councilor Ardinger.
I agree.
Councilor Schalfo-Zephyr.
I agree.
Okay. So, you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to confirm the appointment of James Chambers to the Conservation Commission. Is there any further comment or discussion? Councilor Brady.
Yes, Mr. President. Just for full disclosure, your wife's firm has represented my firm in the past. Just wanted to make that public.
Okay. All right. Is there any other comments or discussion? Seeing none, I'm going to do this in a roll call vote, beginning with Councilor Badanza.
Yay.
Councilor Cormier.
Yay.
Councilor Ardinger.
Yay.
Councilor Angelini.
Yay.
Councilor Brady.
Yay.
Councilor Schalfo-Zephyr.
Yay.
Councilor Deacon.
Yay.
Councilor Frida.
Yay.
And I will be recorded as yay by a vote of nine to zero. Mr. Chambers has been appointed to the Conservation Commission. Thank you very much, and we wish you all the best.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We will now move right into items under finance, beginning with C-36. Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
I am. C-36, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request an appropriation of $50,000 be made to the Fire Department Automotive Repair Account, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. Give a letter from the Fire Chief dated January 2nd, addressed to the mayor, the Mayor Mazzarella. The Fire Department requests a sum of $50,000 for automotive repairs to be transferred from the account at the discretion of the comptroller's office. The department has experienced numerous and major breakdowns and repairs, to include apparatus radiators and suspensions. These are repairs that we are unable to perform in-house, and the increase of parts has been, increase of cost of parts has been dramatic. Should you have any questions or concerns, please feel free to contact this office. Thank you for the continued support. I did speak directly to the Fire Chief on this, and he did reiterate, as suggested in his letter, that they've had an extraordinary number of repairs this year, costly ones, suspensions on major trucks, as well as radiators. And as he indicated, a lot of the cost of parts has gone up, so they need more money. So, it would be, we want to keep our, of course, our equipment in the best repair possible and support our fire department. So, it'd be my position, Mr. President, to grant C-36. I ask you to check with members of my committee.
Okay. Councilor Cormier.
I agree.
Councilor Angelini.
I'll make the unanimous, Mr. President.
Okay. You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C-36. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C-36 signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, C-36 has been granted. Does the Chairman have an order?
I do. Order the sum of $50,000 be appropriated to the Fire Department Automotive Repair Account, same to be transferred from a stabilization fund. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request for the adoption of the order. All those in favor of adopting the order signify by saying yay.
Yay.
Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero. The order on C-36 has been adopted. Moving on to C-37.
C-37, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request to transfer funds to and from the following accounts. The accounts being transferred from are park maintenance prior year, $5,861.52. Park maintenance, $2,119.31. Forestry expense prior year, $4,519.17. To the tree survey grant account, $12,500. Tree survey grant account was established to accept a grant of $12,500, a matching grant, to establish a GIS tree survey of the entire city. And what that comprises is, the firm that did it actually went out and mapped all of the trees and the various rights away across the city, and put qualitative information into the GIS map on each and every one of those trees, including its species, its age, its condition. And this, of course, is a planning tool for the forestry department to know what trees they need to address first, and have a concerted effort to keep our trees in the best possible condition in the right of way. As I indicated, we've already received the $12,500 grant from the state. We've already spent the $25,000. So, this is a sort of accounting process. Two of these accounts that are coming, money's coming from a prior year accounts that were encumbered and reserved, and there's one account that's a little over $2,000 that's making up the difference. It'd be my position, Mr. President, to grant this account, grant this, this communication so that we can balance our books and take care of this accounting matter.
Okay. Councilor Cormier.
I agree.
Councilor Angelini.
I agree, but I'd just like to add that this adds another layer of GIS data to the city's GIS database. And at some point in the future, this will be extremely valuable information when the city's applying for other grant money, sort of bootstrap beyond this initial program. So, yes, indeed, I'll support this.
Okay. So, you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C-37. Is there any further comment or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C-37, see, signal, signify in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, C-37 has been granted. Does the Chairman have an order?
Order the sum of $12,500 be appropriated to the tree survey grant account, same to be transferred from the park maintenance prior year account, $5,861.52. Park maintenance account, $2,119.31. Forestry expense account prior year, $4,519.17. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request for the adoption of the order. All those in favor of adopting the order signify by saying yay.
Yay.
Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, the order for C-37 has been adopted. Moving on to C-38, and I do need to abstain from C-38 because my brother is an immediate family member, and he is on the Fire Department. So, I am going to throw the chair to the Vice President, Councilor Cormier, and ask you to run the meeting for this one.
The C-38, I'm going to send this over to the Chair of Finance.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request an appropriation of $250,000 be made to the Fire Department Public Safety Overtime Account, same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. Again, we have a letter from the Fire Chief to the mayor dated January 2nd, 2023. The Fire Department requests a sum of $250,000 for overtime costs. I'm requesting the amount to be transferred at the discretion of the comptroller's office. My department's overtime spent to date is related to normal contract obligations, two members requiring duty injury coverage, one member on administrative leave, military activation drills, recent residential fires, including mutual aid, as well as some paramedic overtime. Overtime funds needed for the remainder of the fiscal year will be used for the above with the addition of retirement vacancies, along with normal vacancies such as sick personnel and vacation time. Thank you for your continued support. Should you have any questions or concerns regarding any of the above, please feel free to contact this office. As the council is well aware, this has sort of been the process that we have used for several years. You know, these departments are not, we sort of anticipate this overtime, but the budgets are sort of kept on a short leash, so to speak. we sort of anticipate this overtime, but the budgets are sort of kept on a short leash, so to speak. Money's necessary. We obviously have to support the Fire Department and their staffing needs. It would be my position, Madam Vice President, to grant C-38. I'd ask you to check with yourself and the other member of the committee.
I'll first go to Counselor Angelini.
I'm in agreement as well.
And I will be recorded as an agreement. So we have a unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee. All those in favor of granting the appropriation, please signify in the usual manner. I'm sorry, Counsel Frida, by a vote of eight to zero, with President, Council President David Cormier abstaining, we granted C-38. Mr. Chair of Finance, do you have an order?
I do. Order the sum of $250,000 be appropriated to the Fire Department Public Safety Overtime Account, same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the move in for the adoption of the order. All those in favor, please signify by saying yay.
Yay.
Opposed by a vote of eight to zero, C-38 has been granted.
Okay, moving on to C-39. We have one item that needs to be ratified, and I will refer this to the Chairman of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. C-39, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests that an appropriation of $250,000 be made to the Police Department Emergency Overtime Account, same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. At the last meeting, this was passed as a suspension of the rules in an emergency preamble, accordance with the charter. The charter also requires us to ratify it at the next meeting, which is tonight. It would be my position, Mr. President, based on the prior vote and the need for those funds, that we ratify C-39.
Okay. Counselor Cormier.
I agree.
And Counselor Angelini.
I'm in agreement as well.
Okay, you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to ratify C-39. Is there any comments or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of ratifying C-39 signify in usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of nine to zero, C-39 has been ratified. We have an item under New Business, which is the first reading of an ordinance, which is C-35, and I will refer this to the Chairman of Legal Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. C-35, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests that the following section of the City of Lemmonster Revised Ordinance, Chapter Eight, Fire Protection, Section Eight dash nineteen, Fees for Ambulance Service. The chief of the Fire Department shall establish the rates to be charged as fees for the city fire department ambulance service within the Commonwealth. The rates to be established shall be the local or city limit charge or other city in town charges for ambulance service set at current recommended allowances as set forth by the Medicare program, plus additional 150% of such charges for basic life support, BLS, service, and an additional 150% of such charges for advanced life support, ALS, service. The chief of the Fire Department shall furnish the city treasurer with a list of the persons transported monthly and the fee to be charged, and the city collector shall bill and collect the same. Be amended to the following. The chief of the Fire Department shall establish the rates to be charged as fees for the city fire department ambulance service within the Commonwealth. The rates to be established shall be the local or city limit charge or other city in town charges for ambulance service set at current recommended allowances as set forth by the Medicare program, plus additional 250% of such charges for basic life support, BLS, service, and an additional 250% of such charges for advanced life support, ALS, service. The chief of the Fire Department shall furnish the city treasurer with a list of persons transported monthly and the fee to be charged, and the city collector shall bill and collect the same. If you recall that our last meeting held on January 9th, and we had the pleasure of Chief Rup Sidlo in attendance, as well as Deputy Chief Long, we had, I thought was a very informational discussion, and basically for Medicare patients, this billing increase, this change, amounts to under $5. It was $4, I believe, and $85. So at this time, I'm going to read the ordinance, as we just got back from KP Law. In ordinance, in the year 2023, be it ordained by the city council of the City of Lemmonster as follows. Amending Chapter Eight of the Revised Ordinances entitled Fire Protection, Section Eight dash nineteen, Fees for Ambulance Service, is hereby amended by deleting the second sentence of Section Eight dash nineteen A in its entirety and inserting in its place the following. The rates to be, the rate, rates plural, to be so established shall be the local or city limit charge or other city in town charges for ambulance service set at current recommended allowances as set forth by the Medicare program, plus an additional 250% of such charges for basic life support, BLS, service, and an additional 250% of such charges for advanced life support, ALS, service. Again, in light of the hearing we had on January 9th, it would be my recommendation that we adopt the first reading of this ordinance, Mr. President, and I would ask you to check with members of my committee.
Okay. Counselor Badanza.
I'm in favor.
Counselor Deacon.
I agree.
Okay, so you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to adopt the first reading of this ordinance, formerly known as petition C-35. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'm going to do this in a roll call vote, beginning with Counsel Badanza.
Yay.
Counselor Cormier.
Yay.
Counselor Arndt.
Yay.
Counselor Angelini.
Yay.
Counselor Brady.
Yay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
Yay.
Counselor Deacon.
Yay.
Counselor Frida.
Yay.
And I will be recorded as yay by a vote of nine to zero. The first reading of C-35 has been adopted. Moving on to items, there's one more item under Ways and Means, 16-23. Madam Chairwoman, are you ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Thank you. 16-23, Caitlin Huffman, City Clerk, requests a vote to accept the election calendar for the 2023 municipal elections. The, I did have the opportunity to review the calendar. It was attached previously. This was given regular course on January 9th, 2023, and it is my recommendation that we accept the election calendar, and I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
Okay. Counselor Arndt.
I agree.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
I agree.
Okay, you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to grant 16-23. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting 16-23 signify in usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of nine to zero, 16-23 has been granted. Moving on to items under Old Business, we have three second readings of an ordinance. The first one is formerly petition 10-23, and I'll refer this to the Chairman of Legal Affairs. Are you ready to report?
I am indeed, Mr. President. As you referred, 10-23, with Elizabeth Wood, Planning Director, on behalf of the Planning Board, requests to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to lot with requirement for lots in the rural residential zone. Second reading of an ordinance, this is in the year 2023, in ordinance, be it ordained by the city council of the City of Lemmonster as follows. Chapter 22 of the Revised Ordinances entitled Zoning is hereby amended at Section 22 dash 40, Dimensional and Intensity Standards in the Table of Regulations by deleting the number 130 in the column with lot with in the rural residential district and inserting in its place the number 120. Mr. President, it would be my recommendation to adopt the second reading of this ordinance, and I would ask you to check with members of my committee.
Counselor Badanza.
I'm in favor.
Counselor Deacon.
In favor.
Okay, so you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to adopt the second reading of this ordinance. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'm going to do this in a roll call vote, beginning with Counsel Badanza.
Yay.
Counselor Cormier.
Yay.
Counselor Arndt.
Yay.
Counselor Angelini.
Yay.
Counselor Brady.
Yay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
Yay.
Counselor Deacon.
Yay.
Counselor Frida.
Yay.
And I will be recorded as yay by a vote of nine to zero. 10 dash, the second reading of formerly petition 10-23 has been adopted. Moving on to 11-23, Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
I am indeed, Mr. President. 11-23, David Cormier, Ward Three Counselor, and Pauline Cormier, Ward Two Counselor, requests to amend Chapter Thirteen, Section Thirteen dash twenty-nine of the Revised Ordinances entitled Handicapped Parking Spaces, and add the following. Add three handicap parking spaces in the Carter Park parking lot on Main Street, map 24, parcel 9, at the southernmost part of the lot. And once again, this is a second reading of an ordinance, in the year 2023, in ordinance, be it ordained by the city council of the City of Lemmonster as follows. Chapter Thirteen of the Revised Ordinances entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic is hereby amended at Section Thirteen dash twenty-nine entitled Handicapped Parking Spaces by inserting the following phrase, three reserved spaces in the Carter Park parking lot on Main Street, map 24, parcel 19, at the southernmost part of the lot. And, Mr. President, once again, it would be my recommendation that we adopt the second reading of this ordinance, and I would ask you to check with members of my committee.
Counselor Badanza.
I'm in favor.
Counselor Deacon.
I agree.
Okay, you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to adopt the second reading of this ordinance, which is formerly petition 11-23. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'm going to do this in a roll call vote, beginning with Counsel Badanza.
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Counselor Arndt.
Yay.
Counselor Angelini.
Yay.
Counselor Brady.
Yay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
Yay.
Counselor Deacon.
Yay.
Counselor Frida.
Yay.
And I will be recorded as yay by a vote of nine to zero. The second reading of this ordinance has been adopted. Moving on to 13-23, Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
I am indeed, Mr. President. 13-23, Officer Julio Ramos, Police Department, requests to amend Chapter Thirteen dash twenty-four of the Revised Ordinances entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic. Chapter Thirteen, Section Thirteen dash thirty-four of the Revised Ordinances entitled No Parking on Certain Streets is hereby amending by inserting the following text, State Street, both sides, from point beginning 20 feet from the intersection of North Main Street to a point 302 feet from said intersection. And once again, Mr. President, this is a second reading of an ordinance, and in the year 2023, in ordinance, be it ordained by the city council of the City of Lemmonster as follows. Amending Chapter Thirteen of the Revised Ordinances entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter Thirteen, Section Thirteen dash thirty-four of the Revised Ordinances entitled No Parking on Certain Streets, is hereby amended by inserting the following phrase, State Street, both sides, from a point beginning 20 feet from the intersection of North Main Street to a point 302 feet from said intersection. And once again, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, it would be my recommendation that we adopt the second reading of this ordinance as well, and I would ask you to check with members of my committee.
Counselor Badanza.
I'm in favor.
Counselor Deacon.
I agree.
Okay, you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to adopt the second reading of this ordinance, which is formerly petition 13-23. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'm going to do this in a roll call vote, beginning with Counsel Badanza.
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Counselor Arndt.
Yay.
Counselor Angelini.
Yay.
Counselor Brady.
Yay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
Yay.
Counselor Deacon.
Yay.
Counselor Frida.
Yay.
And I will be recorded as yay by a vote of nine to zero. The second reading of this ordinance has also been adopted. We still have an item that is outstanding from January 3rd, the appointment of legal counsel. Is the chairwoman of Ways and Means have anything to report on this this evening?
I do, Mr. President. I had the opportunity to speak with Attorney Madouse. He is said to say thank you. It would be his privilege to continue his representation.
Okay. If there's no question or comments on that, we will have a vote to, oh, Counsel...
I'm sorry. No, I didn't want to address Madouse. I have something different.
Oh, okay.
To follow up, sorry.
Okay. If there's no other discussion on Steve Madouse from Merrick O'Connell, he will be the legal counsel of the city council for 2023, and all those in favor signify in usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of nine to zero. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman, for following up with him. I know he's been our legal counsel for a number of years, and I'm happy to hear that he would like to continue, just in case we need him during the year we don't know what arises. That is all the old business. Is there any other old business? Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
Yeah, thank you very much. I did want to go back to C-41, and I'm not sure if this was referred to the Legal Affairs Committee or Finance. Where did it go?
C-41.
Yep, 41.
That was referred to Legal Affairs.
Okay. I would like, through the chair, to the Legal Affairs Chairman. I would like some more information on this. This is the municipal aggregation of electric rates so that we can offer, the city can offer to businesses and, you know, residents and options for, they can select their electric providers. And I'd like to have an update. Maybe the mayor can come down with a group of people that he's been working with so that he can give us an update of what work has been done to date, and then fill us in on where it's going. Because I know it's a complicated, lengthy process to do. Fitchburg has been in the, going through the process. I don't think that they're up and running yet, but they've started in 2019. I know the City of Gardner has had this in place since 2017. So I just want to know, like, what's been done, what's been the process to date, what needs to be done in the future? Because this is really, it's kind of this big, broad brush of, you know, give us the authority to do kind of, you know, lots of different things. But I want to know specifically what they're asking for.
Certainly, Counselor.
Thank you.
I'd be more than happy to invite the mayor down to explain it to you.
Good. Thank you very much. And if he's, I understand that he's been working with the group. I mean, it would be helpful to know, you know, who's on the group and, you know, maybe bring some of those folks as well.
It'd be a wonderful question to ask him when he's down here.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, we have one item on the agenda. It's a table petition upon which action is proposed, which is C-63 from 2021. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests that the city council establish the creation of a Human Rights Commission for the City of Lemmonster. Our Rule 29 does enable at least three city councilors to have a table item put on the agenda for action. I believe Counselor Brady, Counselor Shalfo Zephyr, Counselor Frida, and Counselor Pauline Cormier did ask that this get put on the table for action. So at this time, I'm going to ask if anybody would like to give a synopsis of, before I, before I take a vote, to take it off the table, you know, the reasoning for putting this on the agenda tonight. Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
Sure. Thank you very much. I mean, there are a number of reasons why I've asked for this to be taken off the table. All of us, I think, here on the city council, as well as other people in the community, the school committee, have received recent emails, I think, from a Lemmonster High School grad. I've heard from other folks, in addition to this one individual, about some concerns that they've raised with me about the tenor, the culture in the city. I think that there's, there's an opportunity here, I think, that we're missing for educating and having conversations about the diversity in our community. The Boston Globe last week published a really interesting article. It was kind of a profile piece on a high school student, a senior high school student from Urburn, a young African-American woman who was having or experiencing similar kinds of things or had in her school system that the young woman who wrote to all of us had kind of outlined and described in her emails. And as I read the article, I thought, oh, boy, there are a lot of parallels here. But also, interestingly enough, and if people get the Globe or subscribe to the Globe online, they had an interactive map, so you could, you know, kind of scroll over the communities. And I looked at Lemmonster, Fitchburg, Gardner, different places. And what the information would show you is the change in demographics over the last 10 years. So, for example, you could look at the change just in the overall population in terms of, and then how it's broken out demographically. Then you could look at how the school districts So I thought that this would be a good time to bring that, the Human Rights Commission discussion, back. I know people that had advocated for it before, when it was initially proposed, and they're still very interested. There was a woman here tonight who came out to speak at the public forum. She missed the public forum. She kind of got confused, saw the interview, and then we had done the public forum earlier, so she didn't get a chance to speak. But I'm sure that she'll come back, because I know she's very interested in this. I know a couple of other people that had wanted to come, but they weren't comfortable driving, you know, in tonight's weather. So that's the reason why I thought it would be a good time to take it off the table and have a discussion about it and open this up to the community, I think, for conversation. I think it's really important, and I think it's timely, and I think it's something that we really should do and provide the leadership on.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else have any comments about taking this off the table either way this evening before I take a vote? All set? Okay, so at this time, I'll ask all those in favor of taking C dash sixty-three from two thousand and twenty-one off the table for action, signify in the usual manner. One, two, three, four. Those opposed? By a vote of five to four to five, this item will remain tabled for now. Okay?
Mr. President?
Yes.
A point of order. When the Counselor to my right, two places over, asked support taking this off the table, I suggested she talk to the Legal Affairs Chair, because that's the process that should be followed. Plus the fact that it's been tabled for so long that our rules call for it to be brought up, to dispose of, or discuss it, or do something with it. I'm not sure why that's not being done.
Yeah.
It would have been better than having three or four councils have to bring it forward.
Right. Mr. Chairman, do you have any comment?
Well, the vote's already been taken. I mean, I was prepared to weigh in, but I was told initially, sort of under the impression that the only debate that could take place on a matter like this would be the process of...
Counselor Angelini, could you use your microphone? I have trouble hearing you.
My microphone, my microphone is on, so perhaps...
No, I can't hear you either, usually.
All right. Yeah, I mean, I was prepared to report on this. I spoke to the petitioner, but I, you know, I thought, no one called me, so I just sort of...
Counselor Shalfu Zephyr?
You know, point of order, I think we need to have a discussion about this. I think everybody needs to weigh in on this, because I am stunned, frankly, that five people on the City Council who represent people in the City of Leominster would not bring this off the table to have a discussion about it.
Mr. President.
I'm stunned.
That's it.
Okay, sure. Would you like to respond?
I certainly would.
Okay.
First of all, Counselor approached me on Wednesday afternoon, asked me to take this off the table. I reminded her that I wasn't Legal Affairs Chair when this was tabled. However, and I know, I'll do, that if you want to get on the agenda for tonight's meeting, it had to be on by noon time on Thursday. So that gave me less than twenty-four hours. I told the at-large Counselor that I didn't feel comfortable taking her off the table until I did some research and was familiar with what was going on, the status of it. In the meantime, I told her I would reach out to the petitioner, and I would check with the clerk and obtain whatever the clerk had on file, which I did. I spoke to the petitioner, who told me that he's looking for a better model that fits our community. If you recall, this petition was tabled on May twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-one, by the Legal Affairs Chair made the recommendation. The vote was seven to one, and Counselor, the at-large Counselor was in a vote. So my predecessor had sent some questions to the petitioner. The Counselor wanted answers on it. We never received any answers. So therefore, I don't see the necessity of taking her off the table until we get those answers. The reason it was tabled is because we submitted questions that we wanted answered. So after talking to the petitioner today, looking for a better model that fits our community. So to take it off the table, the petitioner is telling you that he's looking for another model. So as far as I'm concerned, the vote of not taking, I made, I'm comfortable with my vote. It's not about any other discussion. It's about the procedure, and it was tabled because we asked questions, we haven't received answers, and nothing has changed from the time it was tabled. So that's all I have to say about it.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Frida?
I think there's a misunderstanding about taking it off the table. Doesn't mean that there's going to be a vote to support it. I think the fact that it's been sitting on the table, when it is an issue, and if it's not appropriate for the City of Leominster and the petitioner doesn't want it, then we should be giving it leave to withdraw. But we should be taking it off the table and having a discussion. And if we don't have all the information in a discussion tonight, then it should be given further time. This isn't necessarily to vote, it's to deal with an issue, and it's been sitting there. And we all got a letter from a young lady. So obviously, I mean, we spent the weekend, four councilors spent the weekend in Boston, and if they didn't hear race, equity, and inclusion a number of times over the weekend, that would surprise me, because most communities are trying to deal with it somehow. We're not exempt from that, and we should be looking at it. If this isn't right, then we should be giving it leave to withdraw. If it is right and can be amended, we should be looking at that. But once the petitioner gives it to the City Council, it's the possession of the City Council to deal with it. So I think that's the only reason we should be bringing it up and having a discussion about whether it's right or wrong for our community. And not, and our rules say that it should be taken off the table. Either we follow the rules or we don't. I mean, that's, it's very clear. It's been, it's been on there too long. It should be disposed of somehow.
Okay. Counselor Shalfu Zephyr?
Yeah, it's been tabled for almost two years. I think our rules say something about six months. But through the chair, to the Chair of Legal Affairs, I did talk to you on Wednesday, and I did not expect, and I hope I didn't miss, or I hope that you didn't understand me to want you to, you know, come fully prepared to have a full-blown conversation on it. I wanted to get it off the table so that we could then go through the process, which we had normally done in the past, which is to schedule subcommittee meetings to bring the information to a broad discussion. And that's where you hash out the details, collect the information, hear from the petitioner, hear from the public. That's all I was going for. Let's get it off the table. Let's raise it, you know, let's get it back on the calendar and have conversations about it and move it forward. I can't believe that people here, who represent the citizens of Leominster, just don't think that this is important or relevant. I'm stunned.
Counsel, with all due respect, it couldn't have been that important to you, because it's been on the table since May of two thousand and twenty-one.
It has been important to me. No?
Suddenly, Wednesday, it became something that you wanted to address immediately, I think, for the aforementioned reason. But again, I was taken completely off guard. I had, you know, I didn't have a file from my predecessor.
Right.
So that's why I suggested, perhaps, you contact two other councilors in petition to take it off the table. That doesn't mean that we have to vote to take it off the table. You requested that it be taken off the table, and the President has provided an opportunity for members to vote whether they want it taken off the table or not. And I believe we just had that vote, so I'm trying to determine why we're having this conversation, Mr. Chairman.
I think it needs to be said.
Yeah.
And I would ask for someone to ask for a reconsideration, someone who said that they wanted to discuss this. I think if I could ask for someone to ask for a reconsideration, please.
Okay, so do we want to have a reconsideration of the vote?
Just talking about discussing this. We're not talking about passing it, we're talking about discussing it.
Just discussing it.
So does somebody want to reconsider the vote? But you were in the minority.
Mm-hmm.
So it has to be from somebody in the majority that has to make a motion to reconsider the vote?
Is there not one person on this council, in the five people who voted against this, that is willing to have a conversation about the City of Leominster's diversity and the need to have conversations about how we can do a better job in educating people?
Counselor Bonanza?
To the Counselor at large, I don't need to be scolded by you about what this process is. You forget, perhaps, that this was on our calendar several times.
That's right.
We asked, we asked the petitioner several times to put flesh on the bones. What we got was a petition, literally, to form a Human Rights Commission, period. No process, no appointment process, no discussion as to the authority or jurisdiction of this commission, whether these people would be trained, who would they be trained by, nothing. To put this on the table now and discuss it makes no sense without that information. Until that information's a part of this petition, I'm not interested in discussing it or having it on our calendar that kick back and forth like we are tonight, right now.
Well, having the opportunity to discuss it and once again reach out to the petitioner to provide the information, if the person doesn't provide the information, the petitioner this time, then we should give it leave to withdraw. Get it off the calendar completely. Get it off the table, get it done and gone. If the petitioner doesn't want to proceed, that's okay. We can vote to give it leave to withdraw.
Okay. So I'm not seeing any motion for a reconsideration of the vote.
And, may I?
Yeah, one more time.
Thank you. One other thing, that's, you know, fleshing out how these things work, how the, you know, what the scope is, what the, you know, bylaws are, what the commission does, all of that stuff can be hashed out after the fact, right?
No, it can't. We need to vote on something that, the particulars of this are of vital importance. Who's appointing these people? You know, there was a suggestion that they be profiled, that they only come from certain populations in our community. You know, that's a significant thing that somebody in the public suggested. I want to hear what the petitioner wants. Until that time, I'm not ready to proceed with this, simple as that. And to tell you the truth, if this tabling keeps it alive until the petitioner can finally respond, and then maybe that's in the interest of people who want the Human Rights Commission, as opposed to take it off the table, because it comes off the table. I can't support this without having any details. I can't vote on something that doesn't have the basics as to how the people get nominated, how they get picked, how they serve, what jurisdiction they have, can they investigate, can they punish, can they penalize, are they trained? I have to know that before I can responsibly vote for my constituents.
Well, I agree with that, and that's why I wanted to take it off the table, to begin that conversation once again, not just let it sit for another two years and just...
It went back to the petitioner several times. You're free to call him, and if you can get him to respond and come down here with something of substance, then it merits a discussion, in my opinion. But until that point, I'm not interested.
You know, as part of my, this is just, I think it's information that's useful. As part of, you know, talking to people that I talked to about this, I had a long conversation with the superintendent of schools. They're doing an awful lot to promote diversity, inclusion, and equity in the school system. They have a job posting for Diversity Equity and Inclusion Director, because it's very, very important, that kind of position in a school, in a gateway community like ours, to be able to, you know, reach out and just educate people, because a lot of it is education. The city has changed dramatically over the last ten years, I would argue. I mean, I've been here for a long time, born and raised here, so there are a few of us here that have been and see, you know, the changes. So it's really, the school department, I was really surprised, and I did say to the superintendent, I said, geez, I didn't know all of these initiatives that you have going. And that would be, you know, helpful for us to know, even just to get a brief, sometimes, you know, maybe the Committee on Schools, just to have them come down, because there's a lot of other work going on in the city that we're not necessarily privy to or we just don't know about. And that told me that, you know, the school system understands the challenge, understands its obligation, and they are proceeding very efficiently and effectively, I think. And they had a very good candidate for Diversity Equity Inclusion Director, and unfortunately, the City of Boston Public Schools scooped that person up before they could, I think, for more money. But anyways, I just want to put that out there, because I did learn an awful lot speaking with the superintendent, and that's a big, big part of what the district is doing, to recognize the changes in the city demographic. So I, you know, and to take it off the table and to have those conversations, I mean, I think we should be providing that leadership down here, and we should be working with the petitioner to say, look, this is really important. You know, we've all been contacted by people. I have spoken with other people, not just the person who contacted us, to try to see, okay, is this, you know, is this just one person's experience? I'll have to tell you, no, it's not. I've heard from a lot of other people, and they're very reluctant to talk about, you know, their experiences, but I think we need to do a better job. And I, for one, would love to have the City Council provide some leadership on this.
Okay. Is there any other...
Mr. President, wish to speak?
Yes, Counselor Deacon?
Thank you. I did a little research on this over the weekend, and I think it's going to be a conversation that continues, whether it's on the table or off the table. It's a complicated issue. It can be a very touchy issue. It needs to be detailed, excuse me, and thorough. Whatever way we do decide, I really am passionate about not moving forward on this until the petitioner comes down and presents some things to us before we even consider. I've researched over the weekend on human rights commissions and the pros and cons. Being a former police officer, I dealt a little bit with this stuff. There are some things in place already while we continue to learn and do some more research and ask questions. MCAD's in place, but there's not enough mechanisms. What's the cost to the taxpayers? How do you appoint? How do we move forward on these types of things? And to make sure it doesn't become a political football and ruin somebody on a witch hunt that could easily happen. I'd be glad to answer questions to the residents and the voters, but not until that petitioner, who put this out there before I was elected, I am comfortable with my vote.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else? Okay, well, we're going to move on to items under the community calendar. Is there anything under the community calendar to discuss? Counselor Frida?
It's not really a community calendar, but I just think congratulations are in order for the girls' under-fourteen flag football team, who represented Leominster pretty well in Florida and came home with a national championship. And I would suggest, Mr. President, that we invite them down and acknowledge that win, because I think that's, any group of girls that can play flag football and win a championship is okay with me.
Nice, okay. We can do that, and maybe we can get a certificate in order, and maybe they can all line up in here and lead us in the pledge the next, when they can come down and stuff. That would be nice as well. It's been a while since we've had that, okay?
Their teams run through the school, right? So if I contacted the school?
I'm sorry?
Their teams run through the school. Sorry, my laryngitis is still. It's run through the school, Will? Okay.
Okay. If you guys can set that up for the next meeting or whenever they're available, we'd be happy to do that. Okay. Is there anything else under the community calendar? Seeing none, have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor, sorry, the motion came from Counselor Bonanza, seconded by you,